Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, President Clark and members of City Council. I’m City Commissioner Chairwoman Lisa Deely. Joining me today are City Commissioner Vice Chair Al Schmidt, Voter Registration Administrator Gregory Irving, and our Budget Officer Valerie Crawford Keith. We are pleased to provide testimony on the Office of the City Commissioners’ fiscal year 2019 operating budget. The proposed fiscal year 2019 general fund budget totals $9,965,170, an increase of $87,188 over fiscal year 2018 estimated obligation levels. This increase in Class 100 is due to the contractual 3 percent pay increase for our D.C. 33 employees. The proposed budget includes $5,926,203 in Class 100 for employee compensation, $3,497,350 in Class 200 for professional service contracts, election board payroll, and polling place rentals, $441,772 in Class 300 for election material printing contracts and office supplies, and $99,845 in Class 400 for computers, furniture, and equipment. In addition to the proposed budget, we are asking Council to consider an additional $386,200 in Class 200 funding which would allow us to increase the stipend for election board workers and to raise the polling place rental fee, both of which have not been raised in at least 30 years. This is specifically needed to address the level of vacancies on our election boards, a nationwide problem which has reached a crisis level in Philadelphia. Many of our election board workers are older and for one reason or another not serving anymore. The younger generations have not stepped up to fill their roles. The board workers were on the ballot in 2017, and we saw a 30 percent decrease in judge of election petitions compared to the same election in 2009. As of today, we have almost 1,200 elected board positions that are unfilled. Our past surveys and feedback from the poll workers indicates low pay is a significant contributing factor for this shortage. Judges of elections would go from $100 to $120 per election. Majority inspectors and election of elections clerks and machine inspectors would go from $95 to $115 per election. And the bilingual interpreters would go from $75 to $95 per election. Addressing the poll worker shortage is the fiscally responsible move for the city. Since the shortage has begun reaching critical levels, we have been forced to deploy full-time and temporary staff to work the polls. They are paid much more than the elected board workers. Last election, we deployed 86 staff members to cover polling places throughout the city, costing over $16,000 in regular and overtime pay. These employees were paid an average of $191.68 for the day, or $71.68 more than a judge of election would make under our proposed increase. We only had enough staff to deploy just two employees to the most critical locations. If we had the available staff, the cost would exceed $450,000 to fill all the vacancies in this manner. Our employee demographics as of December 2017 are 64 male, 37 female, 51 white, 44 African-American, four Hispanic, one Asian, and one other. The demographics of our recent hires are five African-American and five white. Our department’s OEO goal for MWDBE contracts is 32 percent. Our department’s current level is 42 percent. During fiscal year 2018, the Office of the City Commissioners oversaw the 2017 general election and will oversee the 2018 primary election, which is coming up on May 15th. The 210,838 voters who cast ballots in the 2017 general election represent a 78 percent increase in voter turnout from the comparable election cycle four years prior. Efforts to modernize the department, increase efficiencies, and ensure that the election process is open to everyone will continue to be at the forefront of the Commissioners’ efforts for fiscal year 19. Modernization efforts include, for the first time beginning in fiscal year 18, the City Commissioners made nomination petitions for committee person available to be downloaded and completed electronically. This is a significant step, not only for the efficiency of the department in processing nomination petitions, but also for making the nomination process more accessible. We saw 16.25 percent of candidates generate their petitions online. We are also working with OIT on a system to allow campaigns and candidates to electronically file campaign finance forms with the county Board of Elections. This will cut down on staff time scanning reports to the website, storage space for paper reports, and allow for a searchable database of electronic reports. Additionally, we are working with the Board of Ethics to enable campaigns and candidates to submit electronic campaign financial reports to both locations simultaneously, cutting down on the current dual reporting that is burdensome to candidates and creates confusion. Our goal is to have this in place in time for next year’s primary election reporting periods. In fiscal year 18, the department fully implemented its language access plan. Language identification cards have been posted in public-facing offices. Supplemental posters and language guides have been distributed to polling places for use on Election Day. Staff interpreters have been trained, and the department utilized language line for year-round telephonic interpretation services. In fiscal year 18, for the first time, all department staff were trained on language access procedures, and new public guides were produced in various languages. Also, in the second half of fiscal year 18, the department designated a chief integrity officer who was tasked with making sure that the department operates with fairness, transparency, and accountability. The Commissioners instituted an aggressive outreach program in fiscal year 18. The Commissioners and staff attended events throughout the city and held information sessions to provide voters with pertinent information, register voters, and distribute absentee ballot applications. Last month, we augmented our social media footprint when we launched @PhillyVotes, our department’s own Twitter page. While many people complained about the participation rate of millennial voters, we are making efforts to reach out and communicate with them where they seek news and information. As anyone who follows our Facebook and Twitter accounts can attest, we are at events and community meetings every day, many times attending multiple events a day. Our website traffic continues to increase as we continue to make more and more information available online. During fiscal year 2018 to date, our website has served 65,442 unique users, up from 36,341 unique users in fiscal year 2014, the last comparable election fiscal year. For the past year, before the Department of State’s press release instructing counties to select new voting systems, we have been working with the Administration, OIT, procurement, public property, and the Law Department to begin the process of procuring electronic poll books and a new voting system. This is a very complicated process, as we look to select a system that Philadelphians will feel confident in while exercising their right to vote. Under a normal procurement timeline, a rollout of the new machines would occur for the 2021 general election. This timeline meets the Department of State’s criteria while also protecting the long-term interests of the citizens of Philadelphia. We are unsure about what the total cost will be to implement new voting systems, but based on our preliminary conversations, the cost will likely exceed the previously estimated $22 million figure. We are currently working with OIT on RFIs to gather more information on this, and will share with you more information once we have it. We appreciate this opportunity to present our testimony and are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your great work. So, national level. Topic of voter fraud has been a topic of discussion for a lot of years, leading up during and when the person wins, you don’t hear about it anymore. But it’s an issue that is out there. Can you talk to us about how we can best ensure that there is, in fact, no voter fraud? I don’t think there’s a lot here, but just kind of talk to us about that.
We are fortunate that our current voting system is secure mostly because it’s so old. I know that there have been news stories lately that have never reached out for any of us for comment, and instead they made assumptions about our current system to conclude that they’re vulnerable. Each machine is a standalone machine and not connected to any machine, device, or the Internet. The computers that are used to program and read, the cartridges are not connected to the Internet and have never in their lifetime been connected to the Internet. Our system is constantly monitored and subjected to penetration tests periodically throughout the year and before every election.
Okay. So, Commissioner, will you say something?
Yes. I just would like to add, our department works very closely with the District Attorney’s Office. So after each election, we make referrals to the District Attorney’s Office for follow-up investigation and, when warranted, charges. So in the last, regarding sort of anecdotal voter fraud, individual cases, a person or an election board, something like that. In the last three years, I think there have been about 12 indictments and 10 guilty pleas for either voter fraud or election fraud-related activities. And they sort of range a certain spectrum. But we work closely with the DA’s Office, whose job it is to enforce the law, and they’ve taken our referrals seriously.
Right. So, kind of sounds like the benefits of having older machines, more antiquated technology actually kind of prohibits our good friends, or somebody’s good friends, on the other side of the earth, i.e. the Russian, whomever you want to call it, ability to hack our machines and to impact our elections. But if we had, I guess, the best technology available, it’s a stronger possibility to hack into those machines.
Yes.
And the machines we have are old, and there’s, like Commissioner Deely said, advantages to that in terms of their vulnerability to external manipulation. At the same time, they are old machines, just like a car or anything else. After a while, the cost of keeping it going increases year after year. We find replacement parts from cannibalizing that system that’s not used in other states or counties where the machines are decommissioned. So it has gotten more expensive over the years, and they will have to be replaced eventually. We’ve been working with these different departments to get to that point.
Right. Okay. One last question, and I don’t know why I’m asking this, but it’s come up recently. With respects to write-ins, what are the rules governing write-ins? Because I know there were some recent instances where people wanted to run for whatever office, and there was an issue about the stamps or whatever, because in the old days they used stickers. Where can the actual stamps be placed? Can they, in terms of the person going in to use the stamp to do a write-in?
They cannot remain in the polling location. So if somebody is running a write-in campaign, they are actually campaigning for themselves. So they and their campaign workers would have to solicit the vote from the voter, just like a ballot, and say, “Here’s my stamp. Can you take it?”
Outside?
Yeah.
Outside the polling place in camp.
Outside.
I remember back in the day, we were running, right, back in the good old days when I was a war leader, right? And we actually had the ink pad and the stamp sitting on the table as a person walked in. “Oh, don’t forget the stamp, right, you know, boom.” Can’t do that anymore, right?
We cannot do that.
Can’t do that anymore. Okay. I just want to clarify.
We do not do that.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dating myself.
What’s that, dated millennial or aged millennial?
Yeah, right.
Seasoned.
Seasoned, right. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Mr. President, just for the record, I think Council President and I are past being seasoned millennials, or any kind of millennials at this point. Good afternoon, and first, thank to both of your offices. You’re always very responsive to everything when we need help out there. Both of my job here and as my political job, you certainly are always very helpful. And I certainly have to mention the veterans that have been helping us for years. Greg Irving, despite his poor choice in football teams, and Tim Downing, Joe Lynch, and a lot of the folks have been there for a long time, really very knowledgeable, very helpful to us. We appreciate it. Commissioner Dealey, I know you’ve been, because I’ve been with you to some of the times you go to the schools, to educate the young people on voting and also to do registrations. Do you have any record of how many registrations you’ve done at these events?
I do. I can get that for you. I would like to add happily that we just met with someone at the school district to do a more formal engagement process with the students. So we’re looking forward to that.
Okay. But if you can get it, so that’d be interesting to know, because they might be people that might not otherwise register, you know, unless you put it right in front of them.
Yeah, we’ll get that to you. Thanks.
But again, I appreciate you both. Commissioner Schmidt was just out at my Civic Association last week. He had the easier job. He was talking about this. I had to talk about assessments, so. And I noticed, Commissioner, you got out of that room real fast when I started talking.
Immediately after I was done.
Okay. I noticed that, trust me. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My staff and I would be very, very remiss not to seize this opportunity to offer a huge thank you, because our, members of our team work exceedingly closely, quickly, to ensure that we dotted all the i’s and crossed the t’s for our ballot question that’s pending. And we want to give a special salute to Tim Downing. I mean, we know that he’s a veteran, but he jumped hoops and made it happen for us for May 15th, and we don’t take that kind of effort for granted.
Thank you very much.
All right. So thank you very, very, very much. And know that we will be asking the school district, what are they doing these days when it comes to teaching civics in our schools? My Chief of Staff and I were just remarking, when we were at Philadelphia High School for Girls, we would have known what the city charter said. And nowadays, when we go to speak before young people, unfortunately, they simply are not aware.
That’s true. It’s true.
So keep us posted on how well you are doing with regards to penetrating the high schools with the work that you do. I know that you were at Girls High because I was there when you were there. So thank you very, very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I heard the phrase “seasoned millennial” when I stepped out of the room. I told you I’m not going to trademark that or get a certain attorney over teener. Good afternoon. Wanted to thank City Commissioners for being here this afternoon. Also, Commissioner Dealey, I want to thank you for, you know, the work you do out in the field. I know we had a very engaged conversation last night in Mount Airy. That’s how we do things in that part of the city. But also, thank you for the work in, you know, getting out the word regarding voting. I know that’s something that the Commissioners do on a regular basis in reference to National Voter Registration Day. I know I participated at different high schools at Frankfurt. I know the Councilwoman Brown, alumnus of Girls High School, which I have to say on the record because both my mother and wife went to Girls High. But the stuff you do around the city, clearly trying to get young people to register to vote at an early age, I think once you get them in the habit of doing it, I think the way I try to articulate voter registration, this is your first opportunity to be a real adult. So if you get someone to register to vote at a young age, then that someone becomes part of the daily things, the annual things that they do. A couple of questions. I know the Council President had asked some questions in reference to voting integrity, and I heard a little bit of your back and forth. But I guess my question, I know there’s been some questions about, you know, last year when we talked, you were talking about electronic polling books, and there was also some question about voting machines. So where are we in that process?
Well, as I said, we’ve been working with the Administration, OIT, procurement, public property, the Law Department, to begin the process of procuring electronic poll books and a new voting system. It’s a very complicated process. It’ll involve much more than just simply buying new machines. We have to evaluate all of our storage and maintenance needs, and quite honestly, we are hamstrung right now waiting on the state because they have only certified one system as of today that would meet the requirements for us to purchase.
Okay. And then also, along those lines, how would we, I know there’s been, and you talked about this a little bit earlier, about some of the, for lack of a better word, fake news about the integrity of our voting machines, the voting system. Is there a way that we can get information out to the public about how our voting system here in the city of Philadelphia and integrity of that process, so we can address some of that information out in the media?
Yeah, sure. We would be happy to provide you with some written information. And just to be clear, we’re not ignoring any possible issues. We are committed to making sure that our system is secure in Philadelphia and that our voters can trust the results of our elections. And the Department of Homeland Security recently designated election systems as critical infrastructure. So we’ve been in contact with the Department of Homeland Security, and they will be coming in this summer to evaluate us top-down, to identify and correct any possible vulnerabilities. And as soon as we have all that together, we’ll be happy to get it to you.
Okay. Yeah, well, once you have that information, it may be a good idea to, as you do the, you know, engagement in reference to the importance of voting, maybe using public service announcements, challenges, or other means of getting out the word regarding, you know, the integrity of our local machines, so that way it can counteract some of the issues and concerns people may have raised based on what they may see in the media. Now, with the new technology, and I know it’s going to be a process before we get to new machines, will there be any means of auditing the voting machines going forward?
I couldn’t answer that question because we haven’t seen any. But we are required by law to do an audit, so that will be part of their requirement.
Earlier in your testimony, you talked about poll workers, and I’m glad you’re being proactive about that, because that’s something I have a concern, you know, being a committee person for a number of years. And also, I was a judge of election before I became a committee person in East Oak Lane. And I just seen the number of the challenges that wards have been having trying to get people to serve as a judge of election, as a machine inspector. And it’s been a hard and harder challenge to get people to fill those positions. And I guess that’s one thing we have to try to look at. I think trying to raise the pay helps, but I think there’s something, there’s a means of trying to get more information out there about the benefits of being a judge of election or being an inspector. I think that’s, for me, that was my first elected position, you know, getting elected as a judge of election.
Mine as well.
Right. And I think it’s, and maybe there’s, and I’m just kind of brainstorming, maybe there’s ways we can part with other organizations, maybe it’s a nonprofit organization, to kind of talk about the benefits of being involved in that process, especially for younger people who are less seasoned as a way of getting involved in the election process. A few other quick things, I wanted to commend the Commissioners’ Office for using, you know, technology in reference to online petitions. Then that was very helpful for us, people to be able to get that information online. And I had to pick up old-school petitions, and then you could just go right online for those who are interested in becoming a committee person. And then finally, there was some work done a few years ago with the Philadelphia Autism Project. There was a group that we funded, a grassroots organization that was helping people that had learning and physical differences in reference to voting on autism spectrum. I know they were working at different locations around the city. They were at the Bennett Life Center, basically helped, and they were working with the Commissioners’ Office, from my recollection, of helping, you know, people that were on autism spectrum to have a vote. And I think hopefully that’s something we can continue, working with the Philadelphia Autism Project as one way to continue to let people know regardless of their background, if they have any physical or learning differences, that we want them to be engaged citizens and voters like anyone else. So hopefully that’s something we can continue to do with the Commissioners’ Office. On that, I am done. Council President.
Good. Sorry, Councilman, we were talking about the end of the budget process when we had to start making decisions. Getting close. Yeah, we’re getting close. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Council President, thank you very much, and good afternoon. Commission Chair Lady Dealey and Commissioner Schmidt, thank you for being here. Thank you for doing what you’re doing, because without you, we couldn’t conduct an election, not just you, but your staff. Also, a shout-out to Tim Downing. Tim is a great guy. I think I’ve known Tim as long as I’ve been in this business, so I think it’s a good thing, and I think it’s something that comes with wisdom overall. The work that you do is essentially to our democracy. And as a child of German immigrants from the 1930s who fled the Third Reich, the fact that you can vote and speak out and be a part of something where your opinion matters was always very, very important to my parents. So on behalf of immigrants everywhere, particularly the ones that came from non-democratic areas, I thank you both very, very, very much. Commission Chair Lady, I have a couple of questions. If you could expand on the normal procurement timeline for the purchasing and installing new voting machines, and if I could also add into that, I think you mentioned, and correct me if I’m wrong, if I didn’t catch this right, there’s like an involvement with a state-approved system?
Yes. Before we can purchase a machine, we have to wait for the systems to be approved by both on the national, on the federal level and the state level.
Is that by, particularly on the state level, is that by statute of some sort or just tradition, or what is that? How does that define?
It’s the law. It’s the law of a.
It’s a statute somewhere.
Yeah, it’s a statute somewhere.
Okay. I got it. And then the, so we’re actually now, the holdup seems to be we’re waiting for the state to?
Well, there’s a, it’s a very long, complicated process, and one of the complications of this is that right now presently, there’s only one system that’s been certified for us to purchase, for us to be able to purchase. There are four or five others that are in the pipeline for certification, and we’re being told that that would happen sometime in the fall. So until we have a bigger selection.
Sure.
You know, we’re really just looking at getting the RFI together, working with the departments on all the other pieces that would have to come into place before we even were able to enter into any purchase.
I think that’s very prudent and very wise to wait till we have a greater selection. With the election board workers being at an all-time low, how do you see the voting technology, the new voting technology, affecting the number of workers that we have?
Well, we would hope that, given ample time for training and instruction for our employees, for our staff, for our poll workers, and for the public, that we could do everything we can to mitigate any mass exodus of our older poll workers in fear of the new technology. So the last time that we, the city, acquired new voting system, they spent a whole year of training.
Okay.
So we would look, at this point, we would look to be able to do the same.
Yeah, I think it’s important, and actually, if you actually take a look, and I think you know this better than anyone else, but the public ought to know, is that these poll workers, they’re certainly senior citizens or seasoned citizens, however you want to eloquently put it. When I go to vote, I feel like I’m the kid, and that’s a good feeling for me, but maybe a bad feeling overall if we take a closer look at that. And we must engage the youth, and therefore, I commend you both very, very much for having your seminars in schools. I don’t think young people necessarily know the importance of voting, and you being there personally to help with that process, I think is great. In fact, Chair Lady Dealey, I’ve met you there at a couple of sites, and I think it’s important. And I think it’s important from a guy, from my perspective, who had parents who really loved to vote because where they came from, nobody allowed them to vote. With the shortage of election board workers, in your opinion, if we increase the amount of pay for these election board workers, do you think there will be an increase in participation in the election board process, or are there more steps we need to take?
It’ll certainly help. Right now, the election board worker’s pay is, if you break it out over the number of hours they’re working for the duration of the day, so they’re working for, in reality, 14 hours.
Yeah, it’s a very.
When you break that payout, it’s actually less than minimum wage. Now, they’re not hourly employees.
Sure.
They’re paid through our department, but they don’t work for us. They are independently elected or court-appointed.
Correct.
And we want the best people possible. We offer training. We can’t require them to take training, but we offer training. And have, in the last years, found savings elsewhere in our budget to increase. And have, in the last years, found savings elsewhere in our budget to increase the stipend that election board workers get for attending training.
The training. Well, I think that's...
Because we really want to solve two things. We want to compensate them better, and we want them to know what they're doing.
Yeah, because they also face the public, and sometimes the public, unfortunately, and I hope some of them are tuning in while we speak, so they can learn a little more, think they are representatives of the city. And I've seen election board workers get lists of potholes, problems in the neighborhood, the fact that there weren't enough police, and anything you could possibly imagine that would come to an elected official sometimes goes to these folks that are poll workers. And they need to be compensated better. I thank you both very much. I thank you for what you're doing. You're safeguarding our democracy, because you're right there. The whole thing of an election is having the mechanism to use it. And wherever possible, that I can help you get the word out to recruit more people. Maybe we ought to get like one of those old military posters, Uncle Sam, "We need you." And I don't think that's a bad idea, so we get more people to participate. Thank you very much, Commissioners, and Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. There are no additional questions. I want to thank you very much for your testimony, and see you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. This committee will stand in recess until Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, at 10:00 a.m., at which time we will reconvene in Room 400, City Hall. Thank you all very much.